We will begin our legislative caucus prior to the start of our legislative session. I will call the meeting to order at six. Mr. Parker will lead us in roll call. The invocation this evening will be led by Councilman Rodriguez, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilwoman Daniels. For communications, we're joined by Mr. Mike Walsh, who serves as the co-founder and vice-chair of the Central Pennsylvania MLK Day of Service. Then we will move to courtesy of the floor, followed by the approval of minutes. This would be the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We do not have any reports of committees. There are no ordinances for first reading, or ordinances for amendment, or ordinances for final passage. We will then move to resolutions. We have two resolutions for consideration this evening. Resolution one of two thousand and twenty-four. I would ask for a motion to suspend the rules for discussion, and then we will vote upon this resolution. And then we have resolution two of two thousand and twenty-four, which will move to the Public Works Committee. Is there any old business for discussion, council members? Any new business?
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to bring up the new dates for the Hot Spot Saturday twenty-four season, and remind everyone of the parent task force coming up this month.
Thank you.
I would also just like to speak on some events happening in Harrisburg this weekend.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business? Okay. And then we will adjourn, so we will call the meeting to order in two minutes. Thank you, everyone. Good evening again, everyone. The time is six P.M. I would like to officially call our legislative session to order. Mr. Parker, could you please lead us in roll call?
Yes. Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Jones?
Present.
Ms. Rawls?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Bowers?
Present. Thank you. The invocation this evening will be led by Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to have a moment of silence for the Stillton Fire Chief, Mr. Gene Vance, who recently passed away. If everyone can offer a moment of silence in celebration of his life. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Rodriguez. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilwoman Daniels. Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. For communications this evening, we are joined by Mr. Mike Walsh. He serves as the co-founder and vice-chair of the Central Pennsylvania MLK Day of Service.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of council. It's great to be with you tonight. I thank you for this kind invitation, and I'll begin with an invitation. Join us on King Day, make it a day on, not a day off. Fifteen years ago, we were happy to start the Central Pennsylvania MLK Day of Service because folks wanted to be engaged and wanted to honor the life and the legacy of Dr. King by responding to community concerns and engaging in the issues that matter to those in our region. And the Day of Service is a great opportunity to engage. For many, it's a day off school; for many, it's a day home from work. But thirty years ago, those who marched with King, those who were closest with Dr. King, felt that a better way than taking a day off was to make it a national Day of Service. They passed federal legislation to do that. And since then, millions of Americans have joined together on the MLK holiday in their communities, making a positive impact. And that's what the Day of Service is all about. It's the start of, hopefully, a year-long effort to engage folks involved in service learning, service engagement. And that's what we try to do at the Central PA MLK Day of Service. So we begin that day at nine o'clock this year at the Greater Zion Missionary Baptist Church on Progress Avenue. Reverend Trey Juhan will lead us in an opening ceremony. We will give out drum major awards. This year, three folks from across the region will get awards at Helen Spence from the Dolphin County, who's the Dolphin County Coordinator here, Charles Appleberry, who's a longtime coach and community leader, and Joe Robinson, who is the Director of the Martin Luther King Leadership Development Institute. We're honoring them this year. We also have students who will be singing, students who will be reading. And it's a great way to kick off the day and think about why, in fact, we're doing a Day of Service. But also there at Greater Zion, there will be community volunteer projects that will take place, where we'll be creating kits for folks who are in need in our community. So housing kits for those who are homeless, and school kits for those in, for children in need in school from around the area. And we'll be doing other things at the site, and we invite you to participate in volunteer projects. It'll go from nine to one there at Greater Zion. Very new this year, it's interesting. We also have thirty-five organizations that are participating in a Community Resource Fair. So lots of information, free information available to residents who want to come out, learn about affordable housing programs, health and wellness programs, job, career placement programs, educational programs. It's a great way to get some, some free resources while you're also volunteering. So lots of folks coming together to make that site great. But what's also great is there's dozens of project sites happening around the region. So folks, go to our website, mlk-365.org. You'll see dozens of projects that are in need of volunteers on King Day. And over seven hundred and fifty volunteers are still needed with less than a week to go. So lots of ways that people from around the area can come together. Families, moms, dads, grandparents, children, all coming together to volunteer. Lots of ways to get involved. It's all on the website, and we invite you to go there and to learn more. So that is kind of an overview of what happens on the Martin Luther King Holiday. There's an opening ceremony, there's projects at a particular location, but there's also dozens of smaller projects happening throughout the area. There's lots of different ways for folks to get involved. But what we care about, like I said, is MLK three sixty-five. What we care about is making the holiday the beginning of a year-long effort to engage, and a year-long effort to volunteer, to give something back to the community. And that's where we're going. We're happy that the President, Councilwoman Bowers, is a member of our Community Advisory Council, folks who are working with us throughout the year on that effort, MLK three sixty-five. So we're excited about it. Like I said, this is the fifteenth year. It began with a phone call to the school district saying, hey, what can we do? How can we get students involved? And since then, it has grown, and we're delighted that every year so many people participate. But it happens only because we get the word out. So that's why we appreciate the chance to be here today. We appreciate if each of the members of council and those present would share the information with your constituents, with your friends and your family. And like I said, please, please join us if you, if your schedule permits, and, and make it a, a great day here in Harrisburg. I'm happy to take any questions folks have.
I'd just like you to repeat the website address where people can sign up to volunteer?
Sure. It's mlk-365.org. MLK-365.org. And there's a little button you push on there to sign up to volunteer, and you'll get a whole list of all the projects that are happening, the location, the times, and, you know, what you might need to bring to participate in that project. And then it has a little button to sign up, and then it's very easy, and somebody will be in touch with you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here, for sharing the information. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. We will move forward with our meeting agenda to courtesy of the floor. So just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You'll have two minutes to share your comments. And Mr. Parker will serve as our timekeeper. Begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left? Seeing and hearing no one, we will move forward with the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Council members, are there any revisions to those minutes? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. We do not have any reports of committees this evening. We do not have any ordinances for first reading, or ordinance for amendment, or any ordinances for final passage. As such, we will move forward with resolutions. The first resolution for discussion this evening is Resolution one of two thousand and twenty-four. Before I ask Mr. Parker to read it into the record, just wanted to note, as you know, the council reorganized, and as such, committee assignments were made. So I'd just like to highlight those before we review Resolution one. I will remain the Chair of the Administration Committee. Vice President Green will remain the Budget and Finance Committee Chair. Councilwoman Daniels will remain the Community and Economic Development Committee Chair. Councilman Rodriguez is now the Public Works Committee Chair. Councilwoman Davis is the Building and Housing Community Committee Chair, excuse me. Councilwoman Rawls will remain with the Parks, Recreation, and Enrichment Committee. Councilman Jones now serves as the Public Safety Committee Chair. So I just wanted to highlight those prior to discussion of Resolution one of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Parker, could you please read the resolution into the record?
Yes. Resolution one of two thousand and twenty-four. A resolution amending the rules of council for the Harrisburg City Council.
Thank you. Council members, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules for discussion.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So I hope everyone had an opportunity to review Resolution one of two thousand and twenty-four, but I will review some of the major updates. The first being meetings of the council, that's rule number two on page one. Subsection A entitled Voting Sessions. Council shall meet in legislative session at six o'clock P.M. on the second and fourth Monday of each month in council chambers, preceded by a non-voting review session at five thirty P.M., but council may adjourn from time to time. Subsection B entitled Work Sessions reads, "Council shall meet in a work session at five thirty P.M. on the first and third Monday of each month in council chambers or at such other locations designated by the council president, which meetings council may adjourn from time to time. When such days fall on legal holidays, the regularly stated meeting for such day shall be held at the stated time and place on the next day." So I'd just like to explain the rationale for this. So we would be moving our council meetings from Tuesdays to Mondays, and any holidays that, as noted, that occur on a Monday, the meetings would move to a Tuesday. There aren't any meeting, there aren't many meetings, excuse me, impacted by this change. But the impetus was that the Harrisburg School Board meets on Tuesdays as well. And we heard from residents that were eager to participate in our meetings and their meetings, that the competing meetings made it difficult to participate. So as such, I'm proposing to move our meetings to Mondays. Any questions, thoughts on the matter?
Yes, Madam President. I love the idea. In theory, I just feel as though it may be a bit premature. I know I speak for myself. I'm not like an employee where I can just like adjust my schedule or availability. Owning a company, we run off of contractual agreements. And as you know, because it's what we work with, it would be hard to just say, okay, we voted to change on Monday because I run after-school programming that will affect the actual district we're speaking about. So that program will be affected as well. I'm not saying I'm against it. I just think maybe perhaps we can table it to the end of the school year, so maybe proper adjustments can be made for all council. But I just think currently it would be a huge burden on me to try to achieve that and still have my personal life maintained.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes. Madam President, I think this is a, a great idea. This has been a long time coming. Like you said, a lot of the people in the community definitely have to find a way to decide between these both important meetings. And by moving it to Monday, I think that gives the city an opportunity to attend both, which are very much of their concern. So I thank you for proposing this.
And just to add, I haven't seen really a packed house, so I don't see the contention. If the community, I, I would love to do anything the community needs us to do. I'd just like to hear more community input about it, because that's a huge change.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you. I was gonna say the same thing. I agree with both Councilman Jones and Councilman Rodriguez at the same point. I have children in Harrisburg School District, so I do want to attend those meetings. But at the same time, I find it difficult to change the meeting from the original Tuesday to a Monday, just also because of work reasons and that I haven't heard too much from the community saying that they wanted the meetings switched. I, I do know there can be a struggle on which meeting to choose to go to, but I would like to hear some more from the community members to see if we really do need to make this change or just keep it on Tuesdays.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just a question for the record, like, what was your rationale between like Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday? What was the rationale?
So it's my understanding that we can conduct meetings any day, but I thought Monday, because it's the beginning of the week, and I didn't, I thought it may not impact people's schedules since we generally meet on Tuesdays, rather than later in the week.
Madam President, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. You're proposing to change the city council meetings from Tuesdays, from the second and fourth Tuesday of every month, to the first and third Monday of every month in mind?
So it would be the first and third Mondays would be our work sessions where we discuss the legislation? And then the second and fourth Mondays would be our legislative sessions where we take action?
Thank you. Uh, I guess my, my comment on it is a little more lead time would definitely help for personal planning purposes. As we do set our schedules for, for personal things. I know for me, I try to set them in two-month blocks, so my Mondays are kind of booked up. I would have to make some changes. If necessary, they'd be done. I will note that the school board, I believe, did meet on Mondays, and they changed it to Tuesdays. So it's kind of like, will they change it back to Mondays? And will we then switch it back? Have we had that conversation with them? Just to make sure that we don't find ourselves, study going back and forth with that. And then also just for planning purposes and, excuse me, ensuring that we have the legislation and agendas on time. Mondays usually just gives, to me, staff a little more time in order to get the information to us, as well as the administration to get the information to us compared to Mondays. I kind of feel like we're not going to have it in time, and we're going to find ourselves like pushing stuff back because we don't have that lead time, which is actually the reason why the school district said they changed their meetings to Tuesdays, because they said, with it being on Mondays, they weren't able to get the information over the weekend to be ready for the, the meeting on Monday.
Thank you. So to respond to several of your comments, yes. I have spoken to the superintendent, and their current meeting schedule for two thousand and twenty-four is set for Tuesdays. However, they have removed their third Tuesday meetings of each month in the event that if this schedule did not change and we remain, and we continue to meet on Tuesdays, residents and members of the public would have an opportunity to attend our meetings if they so choose on those work session Tuesdays. So it doesn't, I, I do not believe there would be any yo-yoing back and forth in terms of meeting days and dates between the district and city council. In reference to the receipt of information, there is a rule. It's rule number ten outlining the agenda that currently notes that all legislation is to be received and delivered to the city clerk by noon of the Friday preceding the council meeting. As you noted, that generally hasn't been occurring, but I'm hoping that with a fuller complement within the law bureau, perhaps it could. If this change is successful, I do have an amendment to change that delivery date, or day, excuse me, to noon of the Thursday preceding the council meeting. That way, that would ensure everyone has all of the information prior to the Monday meeting in advance for review.
Madam President, did that discussion happen between you and the superintendent about the change?
Yes, I told him that it was something premature at all. I was going to advocate for it regardless if I was the council president again or not. But I did want to get an idea of, of their meeting schedule for the year as well.
Okay, I was just gonna advocate if it's something that he was, you know, forward about. It would be great to have him or invite him and the jeopardy.
I have invited him. I'm not sure if he will take me up on the invitation.
And that's what makes it hard, because if it's something they really want to do, they should take the liberty to come see us. But also, it's like a theoretical vote for like theoretical people.
So I, I can't say that it's something they, that they're pushing. It's just something that I thought in taking into consideration those active participants of our meetings, I noticed their absence. And when viewing the school district meetings at a later time because we can't attend, I noticed they were there. So I thought perhaps if we had the opportunity to change our meeting days, I don't know if the district is able to anymore, to be honest. So I thought since we have the liberty to choose a day, that's why, where Monday came from.
Um, just personally, I don't think it's a bad idea. I just think it's soon, it's a lot to work through. And I would love to hear more community, like, input on the topic.
Just for clarity, Madam President, in rule number ten, you were saying that, that that information is, is to be provided to council by noon Friday? And if this change is successful, you're saying you're gonna, you're able to move that day to Thursday to give us ample time to receive information?
Yes, I would amend that rule. But given the, I'm sorry.
Repeat that, please?
So the current rule for rule ten, and that is on page...
Oh, oh, sorry, so that it's the legislative deadline?
Yes, yes, that would change if this, if this rule change would be successful. But given the conversation, perhaps this is something we should table until the new school year begins. Perhaps that might be a good gauge of interest and participation on our end with meeting participation and with school district meeting participation.
So I think like if we're gonna make change in some ways earlier is a little bit better because it's easier to plan for the year. I think what folks are saying is fair, but it usually takes like a month to reschedule things. So like maybe if we started in February rather than this month?
I, I couldn't just reschedule contracts.
I'm thinking, how about this? What if we continue our Tuesday meetings through our summer break? So that would take us to like the end of August, which should coincide with the beginning of school. And we can then gauge perhaps an amendment at that time. That way, it wouldn't be the full year, but we would have at least our one meeting in August, at the end of August, and then the duration from September through December to... It's my understanding, there are some other very minor changes that need to be made. It's my understanding, since it's a resolution, we do not need a motion to amend. We can just simply state and make the changes, is that correct, Sister Grover?
You can state and make the changes. You can vote on specific amendments altogether. So for example, you would say item in rule seven, nine, and thirteen, with the proposed language. And then the, the document would be brought into conformity with the council's vote. And I will note that it's always been the case, council can change their rules at any time. That's the council's prerogative. The state has to do it at the very beginning of a session. That rule doesn't apply here.
Thank you. Okay, so is everyone okay with that compromise to revisit following our summer break?
Yes.
Okay.
That will help.
All right.
Thank you.
The next change is to courtesy of the floor, that's rule number nine. The very last sentence notes that each person addressing the council shall step up to the podium, shall give his or her name and address for the record, and unless further time is granted by the presiding officer, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. So it's just simply adding one more minute to public comment.
Madam President, I was wondering if we could amend it to, and this may sound just a bit scary, because I know sometimes people come up and they may have a whole lot to say. But I do agree with a few residents who did say, we allow directors or anyone who comes with communication to speak as long as they want. But when residents come, they're on a time limit. And I do know why we have a time limit, but I was just wondering, is there any way we could either give them a little bit more time, maybe five minutes, without having to say no time limit? Because I know that can be a little scary because someone may go too long. But I don't know, I think some people rush what they're saying within those two minutes, and they don't really get out what they want to say, or they're very nervous because they're scared of the alarm going off. So I do feel like they need just a little bit more time, possibly five minutes, just to be able to voice their concerns, because it takes a lot to come up here and, and... because it takes a lot to come up here and, and speak.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, I guess before I respond?
Yeah, uh, would it be possible, I'm not sure, I, I thought I heard the rule, you had to be a Harrisburg resident, a city, of the city to have public comment? Is that still the case or?
That's at the discretion of the presiding officers, is that correct?
So what the Sunshine Act allows for is it has to be a resident, a taxpayer to the city of Harrisburg, not just a taxpayer, pay in state income tax, um, or both. And council, the presiding officer can set that. The, the, the bigger question is under federal rules about doing it in a, a fair manner. So you can't, you know, because you don't like what they're saying, y- you don't get to say you have two minutes and I like he's saying they have seven. You know, that, you know, that's, that's what you gotta do, that's a federal violation if you're, if you're doing it content wise. But you can also always change your rules, like you suspend them, like let's say you had a overflow rule with a hundred and fifty people here. You could say, well, we can't do five minutes for everybody tonight, tonight everyone gets one, you know? And uh, and that, that, that rule is always in place as well to manage your meeting, so. Um, so you can pick whichever you want, I would just encourage you to stick with it as a general rule. Um, that, that's where the fairness comes in.
The tax paying, uh, tax paying individual or resident of the city of Harrisburg?
Taxpayer, resident, or both. You can require them to be both, you can require them to be one or the other.
And that should be stated upon confronting the microphone, correct?
Right.
Okay.
So there, there's been a few times we've had on hot issues, people that are sort of representatives from out of town that show up and have a prepared set of remarks, and we have fifty residents in the room, you know, and, and they've been denied the right to speak.
Thank you, Councilman Jones.
Yes, uh, Madam President, I, I, I really appreciate that gesture. And um, I, I do agree with Councilman Rawls, uh, because um, this is who we work for, we work for the public. So we definitely want to give them ample time uh, to, to state their case. And um, like you said, Neil, that um, if, if it's a crowded room, I think we can adjust that time, um, four to five minutes. And then lower it back down to that too, if you have a crowded room, but I do think, I do just love the gesture. I'm sure we can find a, a happy medium here to uh, give them that a lot of time to share their thoughts.
Thank you.
It just has to be in the language though specifically, because we couldn't freestyle it, so whatever it would be, we'd have to make it initially so it's that way for everyone.
So it's not here now. Um, it just notes that the, the president shall set guidelines for such courtesy and has the option of establishing time limits consistent with the number of people who will address the members. So that's how it reads now. Um, just added the three minutes to note that, make sure that that was clear. The thought with the two, yeah, yeah, we can definitely change any language. Uh, the thought with the two minutes was that um, people would come to be concise with their comments, right? They would have organized their thoughts in a manner that is reflective of whatever they're trying to convey. So that's why it was two minutes for the last term. Um, we found out very quickly that two minutes goes fast, right? So um, I thought three minutes would be appropriate and it seems like three minutes um, is pretty standard for other councils and boards. So I thought that um, people may be used to that three minute timeframe.
What if it's three minutes depending on, I guess, the volume of public comment? And we'd be able to provide that grace if they have a little bit more?
Um.
Like if it's no one really in the room, would they, would we be able to word it in a way where they would have that grace?
The, the presiding officer has grace to give as the role, as the presiding officer. Um, I, I will, I will note that back, to, to me, it doesn't seem that long ago. The agenda had a, a public comment at the beginning, at the end, and you've maybe been to some others. The beginning one was to only comment on um, subjects on the published agenda. The latter one was for any matter of public importance, that's sort of how you, you took the two apart, you know, so you, so the business could get done. And at the end, hey, I want to talk about what's going on on my street, that was saved for the end. But for convenience of the council, because the same people spoke at the beginning and the end all the time, they decided to, could, could, forget it's one, so you have, you have your beginning one at a legislative session so the public can speak before you vote, so that you've heard from them. You have the, the met work session at the end of the night, so you can hear from them after they heard the information and react to it that you're, that you're reviewing.
Are there any other thoughts or comments related to the timing, whether that's three minutes or five minutes? Okay.
Just that the community needs more time to speak. I just think two minutes isn't enough, that would only be my extra comment. And maybe so, um, I know we said a little bit earlier in this meeting when we're talking about the time of the wording of it, so maybe the wording can be time gauging on number of members, residents in the meeting. So the time may change every meeting, because if it's just one person, then maybe you're gonna say, okay, you have five minutes, or maybe you don't say a time limit at all, depending on who's there. Um, I think that might be a, maybe a good wording, so I don't know, do we have to have a time?
You don't have to, but you, it's really hard to be that.
Okay.
Be like, like, you know, your favorite person comes every week and you give them the form, and then when there's another issue that other residents have seen them get to talk about, they're now on a limit when they get here.
So you want to set a time?
You want to have some consistency in the process.
Okay, yeah, I would just say definitely, as we saw last um, sessions, two minutes wasn't enough for them. I totally agree with you, they do need to come with concise thoughts and given a time limit, when you were gauging that was to make sure they came with their points. But then we did notice a few people were like, well, I'm gonna talk longer anyway, so. So it was just kind of like, that's why I was um, thinking of the five minutes.
Madam President, would you be against uh, the sign in sheet where any public comment would have to be signed in by a certain time so you can get a count? And then we know how to deliberate time, or is that a bit too much?
I'm not opposed, I mean, we already have a sign in sheet, so I would assume that those that are signing in already uh, would be interested in participating for the most part, but I, I can't assume, right? So I, I'm not opposed to it. Um.
Yeah, but that would mean that Mr. Parker would have to be managing the meeting from there and then also keeping track of who's attending and whatever, or having another staff person.
Yeah, if, if I could interject, it is very important that everyone who comes in signs on that attendance sheet because I do use it as reference when I can't quite catch their names. And when it's written down, then it verifies uh, who exactly is speaking.
And I think it's just as easy, as soon as the time is over, the, the piece of paper just goes to Madam President. I don't think it's anything micromanaged or anything.
Well, the other thing I would like to note, uh, we do have other ways to receive public comment too. So it's not just participation in the meeting, we're open to all forms of public comment, whether that's email, whether that's snail mail, um, anything, seriously.
Can we start, like, would we be able?
So it's generally attached to uh, the meeting record with the minutes. Um, it's, is the, any written or communication generally shared? I'm not aware.
It, it was during virtual meetings and, and if you recall what happened, was there was still either the argument about having a limit, but then the written comment could go on for one person for twenty minutes. And that became the issue in terms of just managing the meeting, right, that, that challenge.
I, I, I just feel that um, just looking at the proposed time, just increasing that moment and doing all of that will just be adding an extra, some extra work. Just give them a little bit more time and I guess we just compromise on that number of minutes that we give them.
Right, I was thinking we could compromise between three and five and make it four. Um, and maybe add language that at the discretion of the presiding officer, time could be adjusted so that if it is a large crowd, the time could be adjusted. Um, obviously it would need to be adjusted at the beginning of the meeting so that there isn't any discrepancy of, well, you waited until the topics were being given, then you adjusted the time. Um, I think that five minutes is um, if you've ever had to speak for five minutes, it's a very long time. Um, and I think what we'll find is that sometimes people feel the need to try to reach the limits. And so I'll just keep talking and talking and talking until the buzzer goes off, not because there was much else to add, I got my point across, but since I still have more time, almost feel like the pressure to continue talking. So um, I think making it four minutes, I think is reasonable, I think three is actually reasonable, um, just for, you know, if you've ever had to speak for a certain amount of time, trying to reach those limits, you know, three minutes is a, a decent amount of time. But I, I would be willing to compromise on four minutes and add language that it can be adjusted, uh, depending on the crowd size.
I would agree.
Thank you for your comments, any other commentary?
I definitely agree with that and um, I, I just feel residents do deserve the right to get as much time, but unfortunately, we're constricted by time, so just trying to deliberate and do the best we can for the residents. So I do agree, they should be heard a bit more and that's a great compromise.
Thank you. So what I'm hearing is uh, I think a combination of the former sentence and the current sentence, which notes that each person addressing the council shall step up to the podium, shall give his or her name and address, an address for the record, and unless further time is granted by the presiding officer, shall limit his or her address to three or four minutes, that's our compromise. But uh, the president shall set, um, the president shall have the option of establishing time limits consistent with the number of people who will address the members. How does that sound?
Only thing I didn't hear is resident or tax paying. That's just.
It's implied, we don't have to note that within the, the change, the rule change. Okay, so if there's no further discussion, we'll move to the next committee rule. With committees, which is rule number fifteen. There are some minor changes here uh, with the city's reorganization, so just wanted to note those. The administration committee now includes communications and technology since they are under the Department of the Administration. And uh, during the previous term, we would discuss them under administration. So those two areas have moved. And then under parks, recreation, and enrichment, it now notes all matters relating to parks, recreation, including but not limited to art education, special events and festivals, and the youth commission, which shall report to the chair of the Parks, Recreation, and Enrichment Committee. So those are the only changes for committees. Any commentary? Okay. Next, there is a new rule, which is decorum, rule number twenty-two. It reads, city council members shall be conducted, or excuse me, city council meetings shall be, I'm reading the rules and my outline sheet at the same time. City council meetings shall be conducted in a fair and impartial manner that allows the business of the city to be effectively undertaken. No member of the public shall be allowed on the dais during legislative or work sessions. Members of the public shall not approach the dais without first seeking and obtaining the permission of the clerk or the presiding officer. Any commentary around rule number twenty-two?
Yeah, just to be clear, so that's specifically to make sure that Rosio is never at the dais.
No, it's for members of the public and meeting participants as well.
She's not the, so she is, I'm a member of council, but she's a member of the public. She's not a, she has no official role.
That, you're correct, but it's not limiting to her, it's for anyone that approaches the dais to pass out um, documents or any information in that way. Um, but yes, you're correct, this rule does include our youngest residents, which are children. Any other commentary on rule number twenty-two? Okay, seeing and hearing none. So just to review, I just want to make sure I have the changes correct before we resume our legislative session to ensure that the amendments are correct. So for the first rule, we discussed rule number two, that will go back to uh, the previous language, which notes rule number two, subsection A, voting sessions. Council shall meet in legislative session at six P M. on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month in council chambers preceded by a non-voting review session at five thirty P M., but council may adjourn from time to time. So we are reverting back to previous language. And rule number two, subsection B, entitled work sessions, will revert back to previous language, which notes council shall meet in a work session at five thirty P M. on the first and third Tuesday of each month in council chambers or at such other locations designated by the council president, which meetings council may adjourn from time to time. So that, those are the revisions to rule number two. Rule number nine, courtesy of the floor, our compromise is a time limit of four minutes, but we are also reverting back to some of the previous language that notes that the president has the option of establishing time limits consistent with the number of people who will address the members. Rule number fifteen. Committees should read under administration, communications with an S, and technology. And then parks, recreation, and enrichment, just noting all matters relating to parks, recreation. And then the addition of rule number twenty-two, which discusses decorum in our meetings. There is no further commentary, I will entertain a motion to resume our legislative session.
Madam President, I would just note that a rule you did not change, but just so we're aware of the vote, uh, rule six requires a two-thirds vote of the council to change a rule.
Thank you, no, I did not change that, and there is an addition to that rule, I'm sorry, I missed that. Um, it's amendments, rule number six. It notes proposed amendments to these rules must be presented in writing and shall be adopted only by the affirmative vote of two-thirds of all, all members of council, excuse me. So um, writing has been added to that rule. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to resume our legislative session.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So we have before us consideration of resolution one of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record again?
Yes. A res- a resolution amending the rules of council for the Harrisburg City Council.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns before we cast our vote on the amending the rules?
Yeah, how are you doing it, are you doing it piece by piece or?
I believe.
Yeah, how are you?
We can do it piece by piece, it's, I'll defer to everybody's pleasure, we can go rule by rule if that's how you like. Or we can um, offer one amendment to make all of the changes. What's your pleasure? One, one amendment? Okay. So I move to make the following changes to the uh, two thousand and twenty-four through two thousand and twenty-five rules of council. Meetings of council, rule number two. Meetings of council, rule number two, subsection A, voting sessions, we will revert back to former language, which states council shall meet in legislative session at six P M. On the second and fourth Tuesday of each month in council chambers preceded by a non-voting review session at five thirty P M. But council may adjourn from time to time.
Madam President, because that rule is remaining the same, that part doesn't require any vote.
Okay. Thank you. I'll just read the second part again, uh, just for everybody's reference. Uh, meetings of the council, rule number two, subsection B, work sessions. Um, there is a typo there. Um, it's reverting back to previous language, which states council shall meet in a work session at five thirty P M. on first and third Tuesday of each month in council chambers or at such other locations designated by the council president, which meet which meetings council may adjourn from time to time. So no vote is needed there. The next change is to rule number six amendment. The term writing is added. So proposed amendments to these rules must be presented in writing and shall be adopted only by the affirmative vote of two-thirds of all members of council. Next, courtesy of the floor, rule number nine. The new language will read, each person addressing the council shall step up to the podium, shall give his or her name and address for the record, and unless further time is granted by the presiding offer officer, excuse me, shall limit his or her address to four minutes. And we will also include the president shall set, or excuse me, the president has the option of establishing time limits consistent with the number of people who will address the members. Next, committees, rule number fifteen. Communications with an S and technology are added to the administration committee. And all matters relating to parks, recreation are added to the Parks, Recreation and Enrichment Committee. The final revision would be the addition of rule number twenty-two, which references decorum. City council meetings shall be conducted in a fair and impartial manner that allows the business of the city to be effectively undertaken. No member of the public shall be allowed on the dais during legislative or work sessions. Members of the public shall not approach the dais without first seeking and obtaining the permission of the clerk or the presiding officer. Just when it's note one other typo, rule number twenty-one, it currently reads as rule number two oh one for anybody following along.
And Madam President, what I would propose on the, there are other little stray marks on this or missing punctuation pieces. You know, our office will work with the clerk's office and we will get to, uh, a document that is grammatically, functionally
Thank you.
Correct. But but you don't need to vote on on that kind of error, so.
I just wanted to note it in case anybody was following along, but thank you. So is there a second to the formal changes that are being made to the rules?
Second then.
Thank you. Is, are there any questions, comments or concerns? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote? On the amendment?
Yes, thank you. Following vote is the vote for amendment. The series of amendments, which are being classified as one amendment to resolution one of two thousand and twenty-four. Ms. Daniels?
No.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Rawls?
It's all right, yes.
Mr. Rodriguez, I have your vote. Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
The amendment to resolution one passes with a vote of five yays to two nays.
Thank you. We now have to vote on the amended?
No, are you?
No, we're fine.
You do not, you voted to amend your rules.
Thank you. That's it, that's the vote. Thank you. Next, we have resolution two of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution two of two thousand and twenty-four. A resolution authorizing an addendum to professional services agreement with Dawood Engineering Incorporated to provide services to the city engineer for the city of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Resolution two of two thousand and twenty-four will move to the public works committee. Is there any old business council members?
Um, yes, Madam President. Uh, I just wanted to see if we can find out, uh, some back information about the E A C board, just where it stands. Um, to my understanding, it was fully operational, then something happened, it broken down. And I think the individuals were pointing to do a great job. Um, I just want to know where we stand with it. Is there any funding in it currently? Are there any members still sitting on the board? Um, just any information?
So we, I'll I'll defer to the solicitor, but we did, um, so there are seven members. Council has four appointments to the E A C. So we had four appointees, but one, um, had to recuse himself uh, due to a conflict of interest. So those three, uh, appointments have been made. We have one remaining. Um, I believe the issue was there was a vacancy within the, um, sustainability coordinator. They moved, the former sustainability coordinator moved on, who served as the liaison uh, between the administration, uh, and the E A C. So now there is, um, a sustainability coordinator that has been hired. And it's my understanding that that individual will remain the liaison for the E A C. Is that correct?
I believe so, but I do not know that for certain. I will note there is no budget for the organization, which was traditionally the way it was because, um, they they don't have their own budget. I mean, none of the boards have their own budget. One got one for, I think, one year, um, in re- in modern times. Uh, the, uh, th- there will need to be budgetary monies found for the required public advertising. And that's just gonna have to be something that works out with the council and the administration. Um, the, uh, and you don't have a quorum at the moment because you have three instead of four. So, um, I have asked, but I have not found yet. There there were definitely bylaws created last time. And but the people that created them and they're here are gone, so we're we've asked I T. to try and pull the those files from the prior person, the prior sustainability, um, because they would have been in their records of what it is, but I have not gotten them as of yet.
It'd just be great to have anything involved in it, so we just
We'll provide the council when we get whatever we have on of of what they voted on. Um, but one of the first rules in the ordinance was to create bylaws. So they've they, this is the third reconstitution of this organization. So they definitely had bylaws. Um, you know, and and so, uh, again, I would encourage the council and the administration to work together to get the board up and functioning.
Absolutely.
My question would be, um, I thought there was a a a line item for that, for the E A C. There's no budget line item for them?
No, the host fee is not going to them automatically, which is, which is a sort of a constant debate of from different different camps. But it has to be in the budget you approve to allocate funds to an organization. E- even even funds, for example, the clerk has a line item to provide your advertising. Someone has to have a line item to pay for the required sunshine act ads, uh, that are there. And and we've been down this road before, it's doable. And it's it's just, and we can always amend things as the year goes on, as you know, as things get more solidified. But as of right now, there was not something in the proposed budget to provide them.
Yeah, and I didn't mean like a specific budget. I just remember prior to this more recent dissolution, there was something they were working on where there was actually funding still within that group. I could be
There there was some kind of grant thing. COVID really kind of messed it up. Like, I don't know what happened. I don't know where it ended. Um, but COVID just sort of really messed up the process. And I don't know if there was still an outstanding grant application pending that never went through because of the COVID. I I that I don't know.
It'd just be great this way. We could have them off on the best foot, you know, moving forward as soon as this board gets up and running again. Thank you.
So I guess my question to the council president is who, under which committee would you think E A C, the E A C falls? I mean, because I think that chair should reach out to the mayor's office and, uh, asked to discuss the matter with the current sustainability coordinator.
It's under Public Works, so the Public Works Committee Chairman.
Okay. I lose track, it all runs together sometimes. But but so I I would encourage you, Mr. Rodriguez, to reach out to the mayor's office and, um, set up a meeting. I think she is under Public Works, right? That's where she, her her job is, just to coordinate it. Um, because if no one's meeting about it, it'll sit still.
Absolutely. And I I want to see it progress and do great things, so thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other old business? Seeing and hearing none, new business, Councilman Rodriguez?
Thank you. Um, just wanted to send out a great reminder that the Harrisburg Task Force will be meeting, um, just in case anyone was under the impression that it was this Wednesday. It actually was moved to, let me make sure I have this date correct. It is the twenty-fourth. Um, that's when the next meeting will be for the Harrisburg Parent Task Force meeting. Um, it's an outlet for Harrisburg parents and city leaders to meet and discuss what's happening in the neighborhoods, their blocks, their homes, in a safe, closed environment. Uh, the conversations, of course, will keep them respectful. And any disrespect of other views or concerns will not be tolerated at all. Um, the first meeting was Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, and we're looking to continue on the twenty-fourth of this month from five thirty to seven thirty right here at City Council Chambers. And we're joined by a lot of great, uh, cast, such as Mr. Carl Singleton from the city and the superintendent for the Harrisburg School District. So we definitely encourage any parent, anyone involved, um, that has students in the district. We want to definitely collaborate and make, you know, just just the whole process a much more safer, um, way to go. And then also hotspot Saturdays. Just wanted to announce the registration for the volunteers is now taking place. We do have, uh, some dates and we'll start with the April twentieth Earth Day cleanup, May eighteenth, June twenty-ninth, July twentieth, August twenty-fourth and September seventh. The Labor Day cleanup will be the finale. Um, so anyone interested in this year's cleanup, please reach out and, uh, we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a few announcements about what's happening in the Berg this weekend. First, I would like to remind Harrisburg seniors that the Harrisburg Parks and Rec Department is still hosting Art in the Park for seniors. Art in the Park, um, is back. Um, it started back on December sixth, so just a reminder that you can sign up for that. It will be held every Wednesday from eleven A M. to twelve P M. at the Reservoir Park Brownstone. Um, if you would like to, please register at theharrisburg dot rep desk dot com. Also, don't forget to stop by Harrisburg's annual farm show. If you plan to stop by this Saturday, then grab tickets for the circuit finals of the rodeo. Um, this will be this Saturday from four to ten P M. And for tickets, you can visit the farm show website. Lastly, um, going on this Sunday, um, we know it's two thousand and twenty-four. We all, um, one of our traditions is to make resolutions. Um, so a member of our community, Miss Madonna Awati, will be hosting a vision board brunch at the Civic Club from eleven A M. to three P M. You can visit info at hit three sixty dot com um, for ticket information and more information on the event. I hope everyone has a wonderful weekend in Harrisburg.
Thank you. The time is seven P M. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.